It is now four o'clock. We will open our March 15th Town Council meeting. Brian, who will lead us in pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We will start the evening with public comment. If you wish to speak, if you could come up to the podium, state your name and address, and please try and keep your comments to five minutes if you could.
Yes, I'll try to keep my comments to five minutes. And for those in the room who question this, this is a shillelagh and it's about 250 years old. It's a family heirloom.
Please keep your distance with the shillelagh.
A shillelagh actually is a work club. I won't get into that after the Battle of Kholan, but anybody interested in the history of shillelaghs, I will tell them. And yes, Yoda had a shillelagh in Star Wars. My name is John Sekun. I have moved back to the town of Farmington. I'm happy to be back in the town of Farmington. I lived in the town of Farmington in the eighties. I was once on the Republican Town Committee. I moved from Farmington to Avon. I considered that a lateral move. And I lived in Avon for the next 22 years. I moved to the west side of the river and have come back. I would like to speak to you about the 1928 committee, the 1928 building, and why you should not do it and why it will be disastrous for the town. I'm going to lay out my credentials very quickly. I went to the Wharton School of Finance. I have a triple major in Poli Sci, Finance, and Organizational Management. I studied Poli Sci at the Thales Institute of Government at a PhD program. And I'm going to cite three authorities upon which you should not do the 1928 building. I will cite Olsen's Logic of Collective Action, Down's seminal work on inside bureaucracy, and Price's Law. What Down said in Inside Bureaucracy is, understand that bureaucracy is a separate organization that only serves to services master, which is its task, but it's separate from its task. And he cites Olsen's Logic of Collective Action that basically says people are acting in their own self-interest. They're looking to do the minimal amount of work for the greatest amount of pay. And this is the basic things that happen within organizations. Organizations have a habit of growing. They seek to grow, independent of their charge. We know that a water company that services 1,000 people is going to have a manager, a secretary, and the people who work in the field. That's what you call a closed bureaucracy. The problem is government is not a closed bureaucracy. Government has a habit of growing. And there's only two ways to control growth according to Down's Inside Bureaucracy. You control growth one of two ways. You reduce its budget or you reduce the amount of space it occupies. This rule was adopted by a man named Walton. Walton understood and read Down's Theory of Bureaucracy. And Sam Walton ran his huge corporation out of his house. And when he got too big for his house, he moved out, built himself a bigger house, and kept the corporate offices in the old house. Because he understood Price's Law. Price's Law is that the square root of the number of people who work for the organization are doing 50% of the work in the organization. That means if you have 100 people in the organization, 10 people are producing 50% to your bottom line. If you have 200 people in the organization, that doesn't go to 20, it goes to 14. It's the square root. Because bureaucracies grow exponentially and the productivity grows linearly. So Sam Walton always understood limit the amount of space. And he limited the amount of space in the corporate offices. And he ran one of the largest corporations in the world out of his corporate offices. They didn't move out of that house until after he died. Okay. Sandy Wile, we know who Sandy Wile is. He understood that Travelers was a bureaucracy that was not necessarily servicing its charge. So Travelers became a very bloated bureaucracy where the people were basically paying themselves, country clubs and everything. And when Sandy Wile came in, he understood Price's Law. And he came in and he cut one-third to one-half the people in the Travelers, did not reduce the bottom line, emptied out the offices, closed down offices entirely, made the company tremendously efficient, and made billions of dollars in the process. I knew people who were Sandy Wile's haircutters, so to speak. They would go into a division. And he says, John, I played bridge with them up. And when I lived in Avon, he says, John, I said, how do you know which ones to cut? He says, it's real easy, John, it's real easy. And he says, the first thing we do is reduce the size of the space they're allowed to be in. Get rid of the offices, close them down. Aetna, closed down the million square feet in Middletown. Why? Price's Law. And what's going to happen is that, you know, I studied under a man named Klein, Nobel Prize winner in econometrics. Studied under him directly. I studied under a man named Galbraith. These are names that a lot of people in economics world will know. Galbraith did the World Three Study at MIT. And the interesting thing is he did the World Three Study at MIT in 1974. And every prediction made in the World Three Study has come to pass. Right on. And what the World Three Study says is, based upon the growth of bureaucracy and the growth of taxes, we are going to have entire states go bankrupt. I predict Connecticut will go bankrupt in the year 2030, 2031. Because the amount of taxes it's going to collect is going to exceed the amount of pension payments it has to pay. And so we have another Detroit brewery. And oh yeah, the government's going to come in and dewater the thing. So what I'm trying to say to you is though, what's the future of Farmington? Oh, I happen to be a graduate of the International Council Shopping Center's university, also given at the Wharton School. As a matter of fact, I graduated from twice. I predict West Farms Mall is going to close down. Because as an economic retail model, it is failing. And all you have to do is walk through the mall that they have in Manchester. Go there, walk through it. That mall is going to close down. And the only thing that's keeping that, go ahead.
We're getting our five minutes.
So what I'm trying to say is 1928 building, you have to look, in 1982, when I lived here, the entire town hall and police department operated out of this building. How many people lived in town at that time? Now take a look at the amount of square footage of the police department, the amount of square footage of your other offices, the amount of budget and the amount of people that are employed by the town, and compare it to the population. Compare those two numbers and you find out that they're exponentially out of whack. They're not linear, they're exponential. And so therefore, if you build that 1928 building, you are allowing the bureaucracy space to grow. Don't do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here with us who would like to speak?
Tim Kelly, 62 Westview. Fantastic job there, professor. I was a B student, to be honest with you all. But you made some great points. In terms of population, just for those who are interested, in the last 12 years, the population of Farmington has grown 2.9%. Not 2.9% per year, 2.9% in total. But I'll leave the rest of the analysis to my friend here on the left. So I guess the school department is up first today. I believe strongly in Farmington education. I sent my kids here. And I have a lot of respect for the superintendent and the staff that I've gotten to know over the years. I also believe we may have opportunity for significant cost recovery and cost avoidance in the proposed school budget. I probably should have put together a sheet to make it easier to follow along. But pencil's ready and here we go. First, open choice funding. This program, as most of you know, brings students in from out of district. They are funded at 8K per student. And maybe that was a reasonable amount 25 years ago. But today, we spend over 18,000 per pupil in Farmington. So using rough numbers, if you have 150 kids, I know it's not that exact number, times about 10,000 per child, that's $1.5 million. That's 2% of a $75 million education budget. So the superintendent is looking for 3%, obviously, top of last year. This is something that I think we ought to be working towards. So my question would be, who's working on this and can't be rectified by July 1st fiscal year? Seems like a big issue. I believe adequate funding should follow the child. Just simple as that. One of the line items in the budget was for public relations. This budget line item is up 50% over two years. Now, I think most people are already sold on Farmington schools. And we already passed the new high school referendum twice. So I guess I would have to ask whether that is something worth reviewing this evening. There's another line item called Other Professional. Anything that says like other miscellaneous, you have to immediately get a little nervous. But I believe it's for legal and consultants. The budget asks for a 23% year-to-year increase. So the plan is to spend basically 30,000 a month in the new year on this line. To me, it seems a little rich. Do we really need that much help? There's another line for audiovisual. It's almost 150,000. Apparently, it's designated for our current high school. It's a curious time to be making this purchase, my view. The first referendum we had for the new high school had designated millions of dollars for FFNE, which included a lot of new AV equipment, as would be appropriate, a new facility. Then that project plan got in some cost trouble and I think it got backed out. But then we wound up doing a second referendum. And of course, that was to fund a lot of the stuff back in so we could complete the project as originally designed. So all that as well, but I'm just wondering how many times we're going to be asked to pay for the same AV equipment, right? And again, I don't know enough about that specific line item. But hopefully, that'll come up a little bit this evening. And I guess in general, I don't think we should invest another bucket of paint in the current facility. One man's view. Big line item and a big topic is natural gas. This is for heating the buildings. The request is for an 11.5% increase. However, natural gas price futures have dropped 57% over the past six months. So nobody knows perfectly what's going to happen in the future, of course, but it may be fair to assume that an administration in Washington that wants to get reelected in 2024 is not going to let energy prices go up in a visible manner. Across seven school buildings, I have to wonder, how much can we save by turning down the heat from, say, 72 degrees to 70 or from 70 degrees to 68? Anyone who said children or teenagers know they naturally run pretty hot. We're out there in hats and scarves and they're running around in shorts and t-shirts. Electricity, big number. The request is for over 1.1 million. Since most electricity is generated using natural gas, same questions might apply. Another line item in the budget is for gasoline. The budget request is for a 37% increase from last year. However, the price per gallon is 30% lower this year. So I guess the basic question, where are we going? Got it. Going to wrap up pretty good here. So I don't mean to nitpick, but this, you know, really represents what would maybe be the low-hanging fruit. So now we got to talk about headcount. Two categories and quickly. Management personnel. Over the past six, eight, 10 years, we've had a fair number of management-level people, directors, assistant directors, assistant principals, managers and coordinators. These are all fine professionals, but they don't stand up in front of a class every day. They do tend to require offices. They mostly spend time in meetings. And therefore, you always hear the cry from the organization, we need more meeting rooms. It's worth reviewing some of this growth at this point since we're taking the time to review things. My last point here is on teacher headcount. Last thing you ever want to have to look at, obviously. Previous 12 years, our enrollment has consistently stayed between 3950 and 4,050 students. It was 11 out of 12 years, one year slight exception. I did a 10-year look back at teacher headcount. So we're facing the 23, 24-year. I went back to 2013, 14, just for the heck of it. So what I've noticed is we've grown our teacher headcount from 355 FTEs to 391.
Tim.
So we've added 36 headcount. So it's been a slow process of adding three or four a year, but obviously, 36 is a big number when you step back. So we may need to take a look at that. And I thank you for your time. I hope we can make positive progress today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room here with us who would like to address the council? Seeing none. Kat, do we have anyone online?
I do not see any hands raised.
Anyone online who would wish to speak, you could raise your hand at this point in time. If not, we will move on. Thank you. Okay, Adam D.
I'd like to make a motion to consider to take action on the proposed fiscal year 2023, 2024 town budget.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Kathy?
So tonight, you have your schedule in front of you. We start with the Board of Education, who are here. And then we'll move on to the registrar of voters. And then we'll go into my department heads. And usually, how the process works is that you'll hear from the Board of Ed. You don't take any action. And then when you go through my departments, again, we go through sections of the budget. Typically, we don't take any action today at all other than giving some direction and things of that nature.
Okay.
Okay, and the board will come up to...
I could welcome the Board of Education up to the table.
I'll be listening upstairs.
Okay. Okay, technology is ready? We're all ready? I'd like to start off by thanking you all for coming in this evening. And thank you for the presentation we had last night. I would like to recognize the fact that you all put that presentation together prior to our setting a target. And it was very understandable to assume in past years, we had a target that was 3% and you actually came in under that number. This year, of course, is proving to be a difficult year with revaluation hitting. And I know you all have heard, as all of we have heard a few times, the impact on homeowners this year, which is why we came in with our 2% target rather than a 3% target. So before I open up to questions from the council here, I was wondering if you all had had a chance to consider that since we've discussed that publicly.
Yeah, so thank you. And thank you for your attention to our budget. Yeah, so we, at the time that we set our budget, our understanding was that there was a 3, going to be a 3% target. And since that timed, the time that we're sitting here today, that changed to a 2%. So as we had time to think about this and review the budget, we looked at several areas that we could potentially reduce the budget by. And I can just give you some general ideas. You know, going across many accounts, 10 or 12 accounts, we could probably bring the budget down around $200,000. Going across accounts and bringing them to zero across several accounts. We also have a very healthy insurance reserve. And per policy, we could make reductions there as well. We do have a joint board in town self-insurance policy that outlines what our reserve should look like. And when we're beyond the percentage of where it should be, we have the ability to reduce our budget in a particular year by that amount. And so we've consulted with Joe on the town side and that's around a $200,000 reduction as well. And then between Chromebooks, major facility projects, as well as new positions that we have proposed in this budget, one was a science position to expand programming at the high school for computer science. It's a very popular area of study for our students with lots of, you know, lots of students on waiting lists. So if we, we're really trying not to lay anyone off. And so we really looked at new positions that we were proposing. We were also proposing a .1 Latin, a .2 Applied Art, .7 Special Education, and a .2 Business. The .2 Business was coming off ESER and onto the operating budget. As you know, we're trying to slowly move things from ESER to the operating budget because we know that ESER ARP funding is over in December of 2024. And we wouldn't want that impact all in one year. We also had a 1.0 FTE end user for our technology. You know that we have one-to-one devices and there's a lot of work associated with that. And we have a lean team in our technology department. But given those new positions, we would put a pause on those for this year. And that would get us to a number with teacher turnover. We've had a few positions since we set the budget that we could also reduce the budget by about 50,000 for teacher turnover and around 20,000 for professional development, which would get us to a 2% increase for the Board of Education's budget.
Great, thank you very much for that. And I appreciate your doing all the hard work. We know this, again, across the board is a challenging year. And through the town as well, we've done everything that we can to not expand anything and in some cases, reduce. So I appreciate your... Do you have anything that just shows, do you have any slides or anything you'd like to share with us before we open up to questions?
Sure. On these slides, we also just show the reductions from my level to the Board of Education, which was around 940,000 in reductions. And this would be another 737 and change thousand to get to a 2%. So as you look at this, here were the reductions from when principals and program leaders submitted their budgets. After this team reviews those budgets, we made $587,278 worth of reductions to get to a 3.47% increase. Then we went to the Board of Education. And after their review, there was an additional $357,180 reduction to get to the 2.99% increase. And this next slide gives you an overview of those areas where we would reduce to get to a 2%.
Great. Okay, thank you. I will open it up to questions from the council now. Go ahead, Ashina.
Thank you very much for doing that. As you know, it's a very interesting budget year. Will any of these cuts that you've mentioned impact programming?
Well, on the, you know, the 1.0 science, we currently don't have this position. We took an approach of trying not to cut current positions. So it would just mean that we are not expanding computer science offerings in the coming year. That's what the purpose of that was. There were also some expansion for Latin and Applied Art. Special education, business was already a .2. It was just in ESER, not in the operating budget. It was in a grant. The .7 Special Education, we already had reduced a 1.0 Special Education position when the board reviewed it. And we did put that on ESER funding for next year. We may make some adjustments there because this .7, at least .5 of it, is something that we really don't have a choice with. So we would probably take the 1.0 we put over in ESER and make some adjustments there to ensure that .5 that we're cutting, of the .7 we're cutting here, is, we have that .5 position next year. That's for West District and it's an essential addition given student need right now. Which, you know, is both federal law and state requirement. So we would ensure that that would be covered.
Okay, thank you for that. I don't know if now is the right time. Actually, I'll ask a technology question before. I have one, two small questions. So from my understanding of previous discussions about the budget, there was a line item in there for like AV and other equipment that we were going to be taking to the new high school. I think, Matt, you had talked about that. That was different?
The object that was referenced is actually AV computer and its software account. The increase for this year is $30,000 over last year. And that is directly tied to a cybersecurity tool that we're using to cut down on phishing and ransomware attacks.
Okay, but there was another, I don't remember exactly one. I can go through my notes. It was about $350,000, something like that, that was reserved. And we were going to use, just earmark that, or I don't know what we do in budget, for use in the high school, not to replace anything that was in the current high school.
Correct. That, the 350,000 is in capital. That's for purchase of network equipment and Wi-Fi access points for the new high school.
But that's not going anywhere. We still preserve that, correct?
It's part of the capital.
Okay, so we'll talk about it at another time. All right, thank you.
Other questions? Nani?
Yeah, can you give us just a quick overview of ESER and how it works? Just because from the town side, we had ARPA. It was kind of a one-time, this is what we had. And you have to use it. And there were some rules attached. Is this, for the Board of Education, is that different grants that come on a yearly basis for so many years? Was it attached to certain items? Or were there, you know, thick rules with it, I guess?
That's a good question. So there have been several iterations of the ESER grant over the past few years. They're really for COVID relief, as you know, from the town side as well. There are some rules associated with it. There are several rules associated with it. You know, when you're looking to do any type of improvement or reimbursable items, you can't use federal funding and ESER funding, or you can't use federal funding and then apply to the state for reimbursement as well. So somebody might say, why didn't you use ESER funding for, or why didn't you get reimbursement from the state for the cafeteria project at Irving Robbins that we use capital funding for as well? And the answer would be, well, the state is not going to approve any reimbursement alongside the ESER funding. So it's kind of like you use one or the other. Aside from that, the plan is something that's publicly accessible online. And so in its original inception, those goals and plans were written. Anytime we want to make an adjustment to that or a shift to that, we have to, we have to write into that and receive approval as well for the use of that funding. Additionally, we survey the community every half year or so, seek feedback from our constituents, and discuss where our plan is going for that. And so those are all things that have happened iteratively over the past few years. You know, when you kind of look at buckets for ESER, they've been used to bolster faculty and staffing as the superintendent alluded to earlier. It is a dangerous place to go. And you've seen this in several other districts. And I'm sure we'll continue to see this in districts. You hear the term cliff, right? And so if we're continuing to fund faculty and staff through ESER and then at the December 2024, that runs out, well, that's a cost that's going to either have to result in layoffs and/or drastic increases to our operating budget. And so I think our district has been quite strategic in that. And that's something we were attempting to kind of finalize in doing this year. And we won't quite be able to get there because at the end of the day, those are then realized costs that come back to our operating budget or very tough decisions that have to be made.[1754.78] You know, Matt has done a really nice job the same way in technology, where over the past few years, we've offset hundreds of thousands of dollars of costs onto technology. But some of those, we, we try our best to do one-time purchases through ESER because we don't want to end up in a situation where we're bringing so many things back over into the operating budget. But we've gradually, including this year, brought over ongoing software costs, ongoing technology costs, gradually back into the operating budget as to not realize major swings over the course of those years. But, but that's another area. We've used them for programmatic studies, again, one-time costs. So we've done several curriculum reviews through ESER funding, professional development opportunities through ESER funding. We did a large special education study through our ESER funding. Those would all be examples of things that help our district improve and grow, but don't result in ongoing costs that need to be realized over time. And so PD would be a bucket, staffing would be a bucket, technology. We've done several facilities upgrades through, through ESER when we're able to do so and when that's feasible. In addition, we've also been able to do things like, you know, utilizing a consultant or an architect to help develop plans for things we're asking for through capital or through major projects. And we've tried to offset some of that through ESER as well. And we will continue to do so. And obviously, with some of the challenges that we'll see this year, that's helped us rethink how we're going to use the remaining fund balance in ESER to, to move forward. Is there anything else I can add to that?
Oh, no, that was actually very good, especially for people that have not heard about, I mean, know what ESER means, but not really what the, the whole area is. So no, thank you and thank you guys for coming in today.
You're welcome. Thank you. Jill?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say thank you to you and your staff and obviously to Liz and the Board of Ed. For the last four years, it seems like every time we think we get moving ahead with something and it looks great, we run into a wall. First with COVID, now with this. And each time we've asked you to help us out in the town, you have done so. So again, thank you very much for doing what you did and obviously not reducing services that we all move here and expect from the town and from the school and to provide what you have been for the years.
I had a really short question, which was just similar to what you were describing with your strategy with ESER. The cuts that you had to make for this year isn't going to put us in a position where you're playing a lot of catch-up on next year's budget, where you're taking stuff out of this year and then kicking it down the road?
I, I think it's, it's not unreasonable to expect, you know, I mean, we're, we all know this, right? We're living, we go to the grocery store, we go to Walmart, we go to these places and, and we notice that everything costs more, right? And, and we're not immune to that here in the school district as well. Certainly, we're doing our very best. You know, we've zeroed out, you know, our supply lines. We're, you know, we're doing things like following CPI. We were able to cut natural gas earlier because we did monitor that. But at the same time, we know that these things fluctuate based on what's happening around the globe. And those are sometimes things that are hard to predict. So, you know, I don't think it's unreasonable to, to think that there may be areas. But, you know, we'll have to deal with that next year and, and see what the context is that we're facing. You know, but, you know, when you, when you look at trimming back and underfunding all those accounts to, to $200,000, those things may swing one way or another. You know, we've seen that in our costs for building and facility improvements. The, you, you all saw that in the air conditioning attempt that, that we made as well, right? These are realities that we're facing. So, you know, it's quite plausible that, that we'll see some of that. But we tried our very best to be strategic. And at the end of the day, kids in the classroom are, are why we do all the things that we do as a board. And so did our very best to, to make sure that we protected that as much as possible with this request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed?
Thanks CJ. Yeah, I don't have any additional questions. I just want to thank all of you. Thanks for the presentation last night. And thank you to the Board of Education and the school administration for all your hard work and partnering with us and putting in that extra effort to find a way to get down to the town council's 2% without cutting programming and, and without cutting any current positions. Really appreciate that. Thank you.
Right.
Yeah, thank you very much. I mean, we're all appreciative of the fact that you respond to the needs of our students and you're responding to the needs of our budget situation, putting students first and putting families in this town first. And thank you guys for your efforts in doing that.
Any further questions? I would just like to state for those watching at home and for those who've been following the proceedings, the way the process works is the town council sets the budget. We give the Board of Education a budget. They decide how that money is spent. So there have been different questions at points in time saying, why don't you ask them to do A, B, or C? That's not our purview as a town council. We say this is the budget of money you have. And over the past years, as we've seen, the Board of Education and the entire staff in the district does a tremendous job of spending that money very wisely, which is why we have such great schools in town. I would like to just reiterate, not just what everyone up here said, but what we said earlier. We appreciate the fact that you came in this evening prepared with meeting our target, which through reasons hopefully we can correct in the future, we set our target after you set your budget. Doesn't make any sense at all. We're one of the earlier towns to go through this. Hopefully for next year, we can correct that so we don't make you all go through a process and then do it all over again. So if there are no other questions, I'd just say thank you. Appreciate your coming in. And if we have any questions later, we'll reach out to you.
I, I should say the Board of Education has the final decision-making authority on where cuts are made. So that's what's on this slide. Just to be clear, these are going to be our recommendations. But I also would like to thank all of you. I, I, I see my colleagues right now with very large budget increases. And part of the reason I believe we don't have a very high budget increase that we see in all of our surrounding towns for Boards of Education is because you have funded us properly over many years. When you underfund, there's always an impact years later. And I think that's where many of the surrounding school districts, really statewide, are facing a situation where maybe they had underfunded over several years and now there's a bubble. So I believe we can do this because we've had many years of collaborative work together and been able to bring forth budgets that really meet the needs of our students because that is our number one focus, but also be responsive to the taxpayers of Farmington. So thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate you bringing that up because one of the things in a year such as this, we can survive through that because we're making, we're making decisions that are only a one-off. And we hopefully are correcting them in the next year. So thank you again.
Thank you.
With that, I will welcome Kathy Blonsky back to the table.
If I don't ask any questions, I'm.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
And thank you for the members of the Board of Education who came there this evening. And I would welcome up to the table here the registrar voters.
And if you want to go to your budget book, I will tell you your page. Page nine. Thank you, Kat.
Welcome back, Kat. Yeah.
And I left it everyone's places that Beth and Ann had given to us. It's a handout, so that's at everyone's spot.
And welcome to our newly elected, oh, a few months ago, registrars. This is your first budget before us, so thank you and welcome.
So since they're new, CJ, usually what the registrars do, I think, is if they, if you guys have any questions on their budget, they presented their budget to us. And Joe and I made a few adjustments to it, which is included in your book. And then usually how it would work, just that the registrars, if you have any questions for them or if they want to ask you any questions or tell you a little bit about their office, and that's where we are.
Wonderful. Are there any questions before I ask the registrars if they have anything to tell us about? I see none. So is there anything you'd like us to know? Or anything you'd like to discuss with us? Or any questions you'd like to ask of us?
I guess I would just say that I hope that we don't have any extra, an extra referendum this year because that will be costly. Like we, you know, our expenses basically are what they are bearing for the elections and referendum.
Thank you. That's, I mean, it is fairly cut and dry, which I'm assuming is why no one up here has any questions. There aren't a lot of.
One of the things we did talk about with the registrars, and obviously there could be some changes in some legislation and some various things that could, could happen. And we've said to the registrars, Joe and I did that, if those types of things do happen, that obviously they would come back to us and we would talk about some of those different things. So, you know, there, I think there is some influx in the registrar field right now.
Right, right. And Ann and I were just at, although virtually, a meeting of the Hartford County Registrar Voters. So Rovac does a good job of getting us together, whether it's statewide or quarterly by county. And Secretary Thomas was there. And of course, big part of the conversation was early voting. The secretary feels very strongly that for this legislation to come forward, she really wants to see funding tied to all of the initiatives. So whatever that looks like and whatever it requires of the municipalities to get up and rolling, she expects that that will be funded. And we don't know exactly what it'll look like. It looks like it could be 10 to 14 days of early voting. And that's going to be consistent across the state. They don't want to get into different timeframes for different municipalities. I don't know if the hours will be dependent upon number of voters. It looks like they're really trying to keep it as standard across the board as possible. So that means additional staffing during those days. We think it's workable, but we'll need to work on the logistics. We have two great deputies. Each of us have strong deputies that have been working in this for quite some time and still in touch with Ed Leary as a, like almost a consultant. So it's been quite a learning curve, but things are going well and we're ready for the challenge. If that comes this year in early voting, it could be not this year. But the Secretary of State was pretty clear that she would put for, if it doesn't happen this year, that it doesn't happen in 2024 during a presidential election, but that it would go to the 2025.
So do they have, do they feel it may actually go through before November for this year?
Secretary of State said that if it was up to her, the bill must be passed by the legislature by April 15th with funding.
If it were to happen this year, in other words, it needs to be on the earlier side of the question rather than later. You have a lot of logistics to work out.
Sure.
But that would increase funding for our municipality, for all the towns. We'd get that from the state, so we wouldn't actually have to put that in the budget.
That's what the secretary is recommending.
Okay.
Legislature votes on it.
And it'd be a full 10 to 14 days before the actual voting?
It wouldn't be necessarily full days, but.
Okay.
But an additional 10 days, probably not right up.
It would not be the day before the election. They've made, they made that clear way back. So they, they really can't expect everyone to be working Monday when there's a Tuesday election.
That's prep time.
Because you can't get everything ready for the Tuesday election to be at the polls by 5:00 AM.
So we need to stay tuned with the legislature, see what they come up with and.
Push for funding.
Exactly. I appreciate the fact that the secretary is pushing for funding on this because that could be a substantial amount of money, depending how many days and where and the details.
And a good thing to know is our state Senator Slapp is on the GAA committee. So I've been talking with him, just, hey, how's it looking? Just so you know, you know, we're trying to kind of mirror what Rovac is saying. And really, it's about funding and then infrastructure too because the tabulators are very aged and they're aware of that. And we are sure that the co-chairs are in line with that.
In, in that vein, I will ask you to speak with the secretary because certain of the proposals, certainly that they wrote about in the paper, would necessitate replacing all of our tabulators. I hope they would plan on funding that as well.
Yes.
Okay.
She, she spoke of that. She wanted to make sure that they were all bought at the same time with replacements at the same time.
Okay.
So that we do not have the mess we have now.
Great. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you both.
Got the job at an interesting time.
Very interesting work. The only other thing I would say to the council is it is not a 15-hour week. Our public hours doesn't appear to be yet. They don't peak yet.
Hi, Ann.
Kathy?
I'll just go down there.
You know, I'm surprised Ann spoke to mine. It's not like her.
Okay, yeah.
Right here it says we're having dinner now.
Yep, dinner time.
We'll go off schedule a little bit.
Okay.
But let's just get ourselves situated. Maybe take a five-minute break.
Certainly, we're going to take a five-minute break. Okay, we're back. We're recording? Okay.
All right, so we're going to move the schedule around a little bit. We're going to start with general administration. It is the yellow tab in the book and it's pages one through 25.
Okay.
Usually what we do at the, at the end, Joey, you would make a motion to tentatively approve pages one through 25, and we call it TAs. And then if anyone has any questions on any particular page that they want to come back to at another time, we'll make a note of it. And at the end, if there was a whole list of things that we wanted to come back to, not, not to not ask questions, but if we wanted to come back to it when we looked at the entire budget.
Okay.
So this is the general administration group of accounts is, this includes expenses for the administrative branch of town government and funding for nonprofit organizations that the town supports. So some different things in this account. This account overall is down 0.7%. The office and equipment account in the finance and administration information technology unit has been reduced. The town's computer replacement plan recommends computer replacements each year. This budget reduces the number of computers that will be replaced. So we typically replace X amount. We're not going to replace as many because we had to make reductions. That, that's what I should probably note is almost everything that's, I'm going to note is what we've been reducing out of the budget to get to the 2%. Because as you remember from my presentation yesterday, to get to a 2% budget, if we had the same amount of staff and employees with the wages that are all settled and the utilities, I think that the increase would have been.
12.
No, no, it was 3. What was?
4.2.
4.2. And so now to get to 2%, obviously there's reductions throughout the budget. So townwide equipment and current expenses in these counts are flat or reduced. The contribution to the Farmington Library is 2%. They did ask for more than 2%, so we reduced them down to 2%. So they'd be consistent with everyone else. There has, there is an increase in finance and administration information technology. There's additional monitoring services to assist with the security of town computer systems. This year, we bought a, a system for, to help us with some of the technology and security, which is quite expensive. And now we have to pay for it every year. So we felt that it was very important to have that. And I think we spoke about it at the Capitol, just with our two technology people who do a wonderful job. But just the overall security of the systems, we need assistance. We need other things to help us out with that. So that's part of, that's in the budget. That's one of the only additional services throughout the entire budget is that. Townwide contractual service accounts for, for computer software and, and support have increased significantly. I'm not sure if it's just because of the land of Zoom now and technology and people working from home much more. We've found just all throughout the budget, any of our programs that deal with any computer software, it doesn't matter what technology it is, their increases are much higher than anyone else. It could be, you know, again, the supply chain. I have no idea, but I think it's more about just the pandemic and things like that. So most of a software that used to go up maybe 2%, 2% a year, 3%, it's 8% or 7%. So throughout the budget, that is also being driven upward. One thing that I should note is that in the personnel services account, and you may remember last year, if our contracts are not settled, we take the lump sum of what we anticipate the contracts to be settled in and we put it in the personnel services account. And so in this budget, you could see that there was a higher level because last year, none of our contracts were settled. Now they're settled and that number comes way down. It came down 51%. And the reason why it came down is because all those salary increases are all incorporated into everyone's budget. So that's why that number comes way down. So I don't, we are pages one through 25. I can answer any specific questions, but it's. questions, but it is the administration of the government is in these accounts.
Okay. I will, to any questions on pages one to 25? Anyone has, go ahead, Katrina.
Okay, thank you. I just had a really, just a quick general question. So for people who may be listening at home and even people who came today, when we're talking about sort of the size of the management personnel and/or the staff in the town of Farmington, I've always thought that it was actually small, given the numbers that we have in town. Can you tell us about how many people we have currently?
For management or just
Just employees and the services that we provide.
Yeah. Yeah. So we have 130 employees. So it's police, fire, all, police, fire, recreation, social services, community, and then finance and administration of, you know, the budgeting, the finance, taxes, assessor's office, highways and highway and grounds, parks, a Westwoods golf course. So 130 employees?
Roughly.
Roughly.
Right. But for the number of services that we provide to the town, it's not only just, you know, somebody that's sitting in town hall, you know, waiting for somebody to come in. It's like a huge number of different separate services that we provide. So I just wanted to kind of
Yeah.
Get your take on that.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we're a full-service organization. And if you look at, like, compared to some other towns, we do offer a lot of ver, a lot of different services. And, you know, if you look at a smaller town or even bigger town, we have leaf pickup. We offer that service. We have a very big, you know, recreation department. We all have a golf course. We offer those types of services. And I, I would say, and, you know, someone asked me last night, I forgot, that the board is able to put up a, a chart for, they able to compare different municipal, different school systems, and they get rankings about where they fit. And I've been asked a lot of times, do we have something like that on the municipal side? Because I'd love to see something like that because my understanding is, I think we run very, very low with employees in comparison to what I see. But because the school has to pick, they have to fill out specific forms and do things a certain way, and it's very uniformed, and it's not like that in the municipalities. So we don't have something like that, that shows where we rank in comparison. So it's unfortunate. But I would think in, in my experience, we definitely don't have a ton of employees. We don't, we, we use people in different ways and we have, we, the way we're structured is different too than a lot of the municipalities. And so people have dual jobs, like Russ is the town engineer and the director of public works, where in another town, you'd have a town engineer and a director of public works. Kat is the assistant town manager and she's also the director of personnel, where in another town, you'd have a personnel director and that. So I think that we really, in general, we don't have, most towns of our size would have two or three building inspectors. We have one building inspector. And then we have another person who does building and zoning. We join the two positions together. So I think that we constantly try to have as small a staff and be the most efficient we can be, of always looking to restructure and change up how we do things. So.
Thank you for the explanation.
Other questions? Ed?
Thanks. On page one, Kathy?
Yeah.
On the, in the commentary section on page one. So I noticed we're getting rid of a human resources generalist and then we're adding a management assistant. So is that management assistant going to take on some of the responsibilities that the human resource generalist was doing? Or how's that, how's that restructure working?
Yes. So we, we had hired a, a human resource generalist who unfortunately didn't really work out. And so we kind of looked and went back out to see. And so what we actually did is now we have a management assistant, and that's Amanda, who is new in my office. And she also, we've merged because our part-time communication person, Diane, was, left and got a full-time job. So what we did is that Diane's part-time position, Amanda has a background in communications. I think she, what is her?
She has a master's in public relations.
Public relations. So she has that. So she's taking on the communication aspect and also helping out in the office on the HR part of it. And so we've merged it and kind of restructured how we're doing things.
And you'll see in the town council account that the part-time position has been zeroed out.
Okay.
So that's no longer a matter.
Thank you.
Other questions for Kathy? Seeing none. Thanks for the presentation.
I'd like to make a motion to tenor agree for pages one through 25.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hosed. Motion passing. I'm listening.
I think Chief Ryan is here. Hi, Chief. How are you?
Good morning.
Welcome, Chief.
Hello, Chief. Where's the dog today? Strike two.
Which one?
That's why you get three strikes, Joe. He worked days today, Joe.
Overtime, overtime.
Yeah. That's what we're about to talk about, right?
All right. So the police department, so pages 31 through 39, the police.
We just going to do a 31 through 39, Kathy, or are we going to do a couple more?
31 through 30, no, 31 through 9 and 40.
Yes.
Goodbye, 40.
Yes.
Thank you.
So the police department's budget is a 3% increase. It's almost entirely on the salaries as what the police department, what that is. There is a couple of things to note. Somewhat disappointed, but it is what it is, is that one of the things that we did have to make a reduction in is our, a lot of our seasonal and part-time help. And one of the things that we have reduced is the seasonal help that is funded in the police department. These are the seasonal employees hired during the summer months to patrol the various walking trails and parks throughout the summer. And you probably have seen them if you're out on the rails to trails or down in Tunksis Park, Tunksis Meads. Yeah. So it's, we're hoping to bring, it's been, I feel, and Chief, it's been a really successful program to have, what happens is they'll patrol the trails. And if there's any issues or different things, then they'll be able to let the police know. And the police can be doing other things. You know, I think it's a, a nice service level that we offer. It's not going to be disastrous without it, but it is something that I think, again, we are, it's not going to be easy with some of these cuts. We are, like I said in my presentation, there are reductions in the budget, and this is one of them that we are recommending. The other thing that we, we've done very, very well, as we've done well with our capital over the last 10 years or so, is that we've done well with our police, with our fleet. And in this budget, typically we have three 24-hour vehicles we replace on an annual basis. And we reduce that to two instead of three. This, this I think would be the first year that we've done this in a very long time. So again, wouldn't be something that I would, we would get into the habit on. And in tough budget times, years and years ago, we did get onto, into the habit of it, and we got ourselves in trouble because our police vehicles were in really terrible condition. And we wound up having to buy a ton of them at the same time. So I think a one-year not doing three and doing two is something we could live with. And that's why I recommended doing that. But it's, again, I wouldn't suggest that we continue to not replace our police vehicles when we need to. I don't think there was anything else in the police budget of, it's, it's very flat. And if there's any questions for the chief, he's here to answer them.
Great.
I have one too.
Keith?
I just, I had him, hey, Chief.
How you doing?
I had in my notes that you were looking for, as far as capital requests, the money for cameras and then for portable radios. And I see that there's two light items in our capital slide from last night. Is that included? That's what he was looking for?
Yeah, let me just run the capital.
Just because the number, the, the numbers I have on my notes are different for that chuckle.
We, so in the police department, we've, in the capital for technology improvements, we're going to do funds will be used to continue to pay for the body cameras and the in-dash camera. So we have money to do that. And then we did do, I think, for communications.
Yeah, there was 58,000 in there.
Yeah, 58 was the note that I had. But then I see on here the
What was that for?
That was for the final, we've done a five-year program for the replacing the portable radios.
Yep.
And we did 10 a year. So this would be the fifth year for the 58,000 to get all the patrol officers updated on their patrol portable radios.
So both of those capital, so he's, both those requests that he was looking for are we're getting.
Yes. What he just said, he asked for other things, but we cut those other things.
No, I just, yeah, I had in my, I was badgering everybody for their top capital projects.
Oh, yeah.
And I just wanted to, so the two that I had written down were those two, and it looks like we're getting those.
Correct.
That was my only question.
Yep.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Obviously, we both know how busy the edges of the river can get, especially during a hot season. Are we implementing other type of patrols with different officers to supplement, not having that summer help?
We'll, we'll certainly have to get creative. I mean, it's definitely an area of the town that we want to patrol. We want to keep, you know, pristine, you know, for everyone to use.
Safety, I know.
We have a lot of dog walkers down there. We have a lot of people that go down. And, you know, you have a hot summer, it gets crowded. Last summer, for some reason, it was very manageable, but it's, we, we can't tell.
You're not going to know until we get there.
We'll adjust as we go through and we'll have to get creative with that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Other questions for the chief? Seeing none. Thank you for coming in. I appreciate your getting this budget where we need it to be.
No worries.
And I appreciate all the good work you're doing.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to tenor agree to pages 31 through 40.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Any further questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Hosed. Motion passing. I'm listening.
Big Tom's here, our director of fire and rescue services. This is Tom's first operating budget. How are you?
Doing well. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. So fire is pages 27 through 30.
And really, there's not much to talk about in the fire budget. The fire department's increase is 2.4%. It's just basically flat or reduced throughout the accounts. I'm not sure, I don't really have anything really to report on, other than that it is very flat. We are trying to do a little bit of controls over some overtime. We do have a lot of fluctuation of our full-time staff. And when our full-time staff, it's a, a lot of our full-time firefighters, some is a stepping ground to other fire departments. And so we do have some turnover there. And then when we have some turnover, we do have overtime. And so our overtime is something that Tom and I have been working on to try to have some control over that. But other than that, Tom's doing a good job getting a handle on it. We're a different type of fire department. I think it's with, I've mentioned it, we're volunteers. We're paid people. We're volunteer chiefs. We are paid administrator. So I think, what are you, about seven or eight months in and getting the lay of the land a little bit? And it's pretty much a, a flat, flat budget.
So seven months in, we said, welcome, don't spend any money.
I'm trying.
Thank you. Questions for?
Do you, thank you for coming in. Do you see anything, you know, you've been here for seven months and now you're getting the lay of the land. Do you see any bigger expenses coming up in, in the next couple of years that we should be aware or deficiencies and, and how we're running our, our fire department or things that could be heavily approved on?
I think the biggest expense is obviously going to be apparatus. And that's Kathy and Joe are well aware of that. The problem is, and I just, I was talking to somebody today, you're looking at a three to four-year build out just for one apparatus. So if you order it today, you're not going to, can't expect it till probably 2026, 2027. So that's probably the biggest thing. And that's
Well, and also the buildings.
Yeah.
The buildings. The buildings. The build, we've been kind of kicking the can with the buildings for a while now. And we just had a group meeting with the fire chiefs and trying to say, kind of prioritizing what it is and getting an architect in to, we have some money from previous capital to kind of get the priorities and, of what's important, but boilers. And they have, as, even what we say a lot, they have space issues in some of these fire departments. I recently took a tour with Tom and we went to all the fire departments. And, you know, a lot of them need, there's space. There's space issues and different things like that. And it's, it's tough being a volunteer, too. It's a lot of, it's a lot of volunteer time and a lot of, so constantly one of the things, just trying to keep up with our, getting volunteers and the training and things like that. So the fire service is, it's a, it's a work in progress.
Yes. This is a, a very unique department in a good way. So they're very, you're very lucky to have the staffing during the day and have, you have very dedicated volunteers for night, at the night, at the night and the weekends. So Kathy and I are working on it. It's, it's, it's a work in progress, but I think we're, we're putting some dents in it. So.
It's, change is hard. And so when you have, you know, there, your different fire departments and things like that. So, you know, you have a volunteer system and so you can't, you don't run it like you would a paid, full-time paid department. And so I think that we're running as efficiently as we can, but there are, we make, try to make small changes to see if we can do things better. But like I said, it's, I think Tom with a fresh set of eyes on things and coming from a, a big department and some different things with apparatus and how much apparatus we have and what we need and things, what kind of apparatus. And some of that stuff, I think, has been very valuable to have Tom's experience on some of that, to just look at some of it, the communication systems, how that all works and how, what we're buying and what we're looking at. And so I think that's all been very valuable to us.
Great. Other questions?
I actually do have one question for you. Thank you for, thank you for coming in and for what you do. I was, it was nice to see that we're proposing some additional volunteer firemen for the town, which is nice. And I was just curious to know, we, we supported some incentives for volunteer firefighters last year. I'm wondering if that's helping in doing recruitment?
It is. It's helping. I, I probably, I get roughly between three and five inquiries a week about, for people that want to be volunteers. Unfortunately, you know, people have families, they have full-time jobs. Not everybody can always do it. But I, I think that, you know, if you're able to pick up a net two or three, possibly five people a year, it's a big help. Retaining and recruiting volunteers is, is a nationwide issue right now. I think Farmington is probably ahead of the game as compared to other surrounding departments. We do a good job here. I think the fact that we, we treat our volunteers here very, very well as compared to surrounding towns is, is a big plus. We do, we provide a lot of training for them. The training tower itself is a huge incentive for people. For a layperson, it might not seem that big of a deal, but for people in the fire service, the fact that you can go down there in your own town, your own municipality and train pretty much whenever you want is a big incentive for a lot of people. And I think that, that attracts people to stay with the volunteer service here. So.
Excellent.
Yeah. We, Tom, when he started, one of the things I asked him to do, and we looked
up as the, kind of the incentives and the various things for the volunteers and do a kind of a comparison to other communities like us. And again, like I said before, we run things differently. So it's hard to get apples to apples, but we tried our best. And I think that, like Tom said, that the incentives and things that we offer are probably on, on the generous side in comparison to other communities of the various things that we try to do. And so, but it's, it's worth it because they, it's a lot of time and effort for these volunteers to help us out.
And we're grateful for that.
Yeah.
So thank you, Tom. And please pass it on to our firefighters and our volunteers.
I will.
Appreciate their efforts.
Thank you.
And one last question for you, sir. I know for, for a while, we're in the process of replacing turnout gear. Have we completed that process? Still in the middle of it?
So we've, we've completed it. It's been shipped in. We have one prospective firefighter that's going to be hired. I'm going to have to get turnout gear for that person. But other than that, we're pretty much caught up. I, I tried to make it a, a point this year to get as much as done as I could because we all kind of saw what was coming with inflation and everything else. So now that we had the money and we could, we were able to do that, we were able to get the majority of, we might have one or two next year, but it's not going to be a, a big deal to, to outfit those people. So great.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
Hoses are in the capital budget still.
The hose is in the capital and in the other account, we're doing the communication.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah. Which they, which they'll be very happy about because that's something we really need to do.
Thank you, Tom, for coming in. Appreciate what you do. We do have a unique fire department and the connection between our full-time and the volunteers is very important. And it, it helps us obviously in this budget season every year, which is why we're generally very receptive to the equipment you need. And I think you've done a good job of trying to keep consistent through the different departments, something we haven't always done in the past. So there could be crossover in that equipment and knowledge and repairs and all that. So thank you with all of that. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Right. Have a good evening.
You also. I'd like to make a motion to tenor agree to pages 27 I'd like to make a motion to tenly agree to pages twenty-seven through thirty.
Second.
A motion of second. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Hello, Russ.
That's a nice color suit on you.
Give Brownie points.
Has he presented his budget yet, and you're already complimenting him?
I just like the color. Reminds me of mine.
My budget is very weak this year, so I'll take the compliment.
He wore suits at the same time.
Oh, did you? We are in public works. It's the green tab, and it would be pages forty-three through fifty-four. Overall, the public works account is down point four percent. Some things to note, there is a reduction of two full-time positions. The building maintenance foreman position in the highway department and the AutoCAD specialist position in the engineering division have both been eliminated. There is no seasonal summer help funded in the highway department. These are the employees that help over the, the summer, doing a lot of different things to make grounds maintenance tasks. This is, again, something that both of these things is kind, somewhat hard to swallow. I think we'll miss having our seasonal people in the summer, just like we're going to miss our patrol officers. I think some of the things that you'll potentially see is that instead of having the garbage picked up on the trails on Sunday, it'll probably be on a Monday during the working hours. The off, the highway and grounds people won't be doing other things. They'll be picking up some garbage, so a little bit less efficiency on different things. Again, not the end of the world, but something that you may see a little bit of a, a reduction of that type of service. The other thing is that a Westwood seasonal golf course position has been eliminated. That's an, I think, is it an eight, eight month position? Eighth month? Historically, we have two Westwood seasonal employees. We're going to have one. And then, if, at busy times, when we can spare, we'll probably send one of the highway and grounds people up to the Westwoods. Again, less work than for the highway and grounds to be able to do, but we'll, we'll shift people. The reduction of the building maintenance foreman position was one of the things that we have been talking about, and I think I've mentioned it, that we've done some restructuring. And one of the things that we've realized is that, as our, the shed, we talked about a little bit out there, the shed that we have...
Pavilion.
Pavilion, yes, pavilion. I couldn't, I, the only, I was thinking of the other name.
What was that name?
I believe he called it a she-shed.
I like it.
That's the only thing I could think of. The pavilion. And so, one of the, we have created a capital projects team, and they work in the highway division. And what they do is do, if they can repair a roof, it's a carpenter, and do various things like that. Instead of a building maintenance, where what was occurring is that we're, our building maintenance was calling contractors all the time anyway. So, it was like we were doing, we didn't need to have that second person. So, really, we felt it was more efficient to have more of a carpenter type of person. Also, that person is, has a CDL driver's license, which is able to drive the snowplow, too. So, we're more efficient that way. So, we've kind of done, did a restructuring. The AutoCAD specialist, again, not going to be easy, but some, it was a position, we did to get down to our two percent, we did have to get to bodies, full-time people. And so, that was one of the positions. And this is something that Russ will maybe contract out, or have some people in his office do it. But, again, something that is not really an easy decision, but we, we had to meet the target. So, those were the two, those were the three things, and they were the people. Other than that, if you go through the budget, it's really very flat, or it's reductions. And we haven't talked about it in the other departments, which I obviously should have, is that, again, all the utilities are all up in all the departments, too. And that's one of the things that is driving this budget.
It's not as noticeable when everything else has been cut, when you look at the bottom line, but I appreciate you mentioning that. Questions?
I have one question, but you can go ahead.
No, you can start, please.
Okay. So, I know that you've made a lot of cuts, and I thank you and Kathy for doing this, but how will this impact services? Like, are we still going to have leave pickup? Are we going to be able to salt the roads? Why are you shaking your head?
I'm, make this twitch.
Yes? I appreciated, the roads were salted yesterday, or, you know, when we had that huge snowstorm, like, right around four o'clock. I appreciated seeing the trucks on the road, because I was the only idiot driving, coming back home from work. But, no, just in terms of, like, going forward, like, how will this impact, like, day-to-day residents? What will they not be seeing that they're used to, if anything?
Truthfully, nothing.
Okay.
The leave program is, still remains the same. Snow plowing will remain the same. As Kathy mentioned, we've restructured a little with the building maintainer and building maintenance. So, it really won't impact, you know, the residents. As far as the AutoCAD person in my office, you know, if I have to sub something out, I will. I've, I've been doing more. Our engineer will do more work. Our surveyor will do more drafting. It just, we're not efficient when we're doing it that way. So, our applications for grants will still go in. We'll still get, meet all the needs that we need to meet. It's just, it's going to maybe take some more time for that end of it, but none of, none of the cuts will impact the residents.
Okay. Thank you.
You'll see potentially more litter on...
Well, that's another, yeah. The summer seasonals and stuff, that, the river, the parks, our maintenance, meaning trash pickup, is going to be the one thing that we're going to see more of.
I wonder if we could just have, like, you know, carry-in, carry-out, you have to see some of those...
We have signs. We do have that up. Nobody does it.
Clearly, you can tell how much I trail walker, you know, hiker and all that stuff.
It's, it doesn't happen.
Yeah, I know.
So, that's the, that's the one downfall that's going to, you're going to see with this.
And, and probably what could potentially happen, and to Joey's comment with the police, you know, it's not that we're going to let it get to a point, if it's, if it's atrocious, and same thing with the safety, it's just that you're going to be paying high people to be doing those types of jobs where they should be doing other things. And also, it just slows down the work of something else. So, if you have a drainage project that you're doing in the summer, but you have such a problem with litter pickup and trails, the people that are, they're not going to be able to do that drainage project. They're going to do the litter pickup if it gets to that point. But I do think that we are going to see some reduction, you know, of, people should expect that. And it's just not going to be as fast on some of the different things. But, to the rank, to the resident, I don't think that they would notice that. That's, this is our goal overall for this, this budget, is to keep the cuts as far away from the residents that you possibly could.
Okay. Thank you.
Weed, one thing, weed whacking along the trail and the parks is going to probably be slow. So, you'll see taller grass along the edges. We'll mow the, mow the fields, obviously, but that little fine trimming and fine tuning stuff is, may have to get pushed aside. So, that's one other thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Invest in a couple goats or something?
Oh, goat.
We just talked about it.
We just did.
Well, there you go. See, the minds think alike, huh?
Might be able to eat the trash, too, yeah.
I don't have a question, but I do want to always say, "Thank you." You always come to us with savings, you know, from the past, from millings, to your mechanic for saving us money on replacement of engines and stuff. So, I know you and your staff is always looking out for the town to reduce price, reduce costs, and do things efficiently. So, thank you, and hopefully, eventually, one of these days, we will get your department up to the staffing that it needs.
Well, there's a statement in the, the budget that, it won't, there's no impact this year. But, I, thank you. I appreciate it. But Kathy and Joe do a lot. They support us. You guys, you know, you all support us. We've worked hard over the years to get to where we're at, and it's a mentality. And we hire people. We've had, good luck with a lot of good people, and they buy into our philosophy and what our way of life is and what we expect here. So, it really starts with everyone who's involved, so, thank you.
No, thank you, and I look forward to meeting the Sherpa with his goats and, along the trails.
Other questions for Ed?
Yeah, I just have a very general question about electricity and our electricity rate. Kind of thinking about it a little bit more. We had Mr. Sullivan from Eversource at the business breakfast. Do we just go with the Eversource rate, or do we ever look at other suppliers? Like, so I can give you, like, an example. Me personally, I have electric heat, so I get pretty impacted when the, the electric prices go up. And early last year, I locked in a multi-year contract at ten point four cents. So, when Eversource rate went up to twenty-four cents, you know, I didn't have to worry about that. I'm wondering, do we, do we do that, or what do we do?
I'll bring this over to Joe. He's, runs that end for us.
We work with consultant, and we go out periodically for rates. We do not go with the standard rate that Eversource offers. Right now, we're with Constellation Energy, and we have, we've had a three-year rate lock with them. That rate lock unfortunately expires in December, first billing period in December of 2023. But we've been enjoying seven point seven percent, seven point seven cents per kilowatt hour.
Oh, great.
We did go out for marketing. It was a dip, probably about a month ago, month and a half ago, there was a dip in natural price of gas. We felt strongly we should look at marketing. We had looked at marketing in December, to try to get ahead of it, and we're getting rates around nineteen point seven percent. When the natural gas price dipped about six weeks ago, we looked at it again. We locked in at just over twelve, just about twelve point seven percent, twelve point seven percent. So, we did, and we locked in that for, that was two, I think that was two years that we locked in for. We were, we were up for three options. The best option, actually, was to go one year. We were offering something like eleven percent to go one year. And, I'm sorry, that was the opposite. There, actually, it was like fourteen percent to go one year. It was like twelve percent to go two years, and it was like, twelve point, it was like eleven point eight percent to go three years. So, it wasn't much of a difference. So, we went to two years, just figuring that, you know, we'll, we'll see what happens two years from now. So, right now, once it expires in December, we'll be, we'll jump from twelve, seven point seven to just over, just shy of fifteen percent, to get to twelve point seven percent.
Okay. You're saying percent, but is that...
I'm sorry, cent.
Cent per kilowatt hour. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Gotcha. Yeah, I'm happy to hear that we're, we're shopping around for the best rate, so that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, Joe is always shopping for all our utilities. Sure.
Keith? I think you've already basically answered this question, Russ, but it's another service expectation question, which is, we talked a bunch about projected roads that'll be getting, taken care of in the next year. With the new budget, would you still anticipate that process going along the same schedule?
Right. As long as that number, you know, the bond question gets approved.
As long as the bond question gets approved.
Right.
And then, I saw, and then on your capital, it was the, the truck that you had said that you badly needed, because you had one from 1998, right? That's the one that's being replaced?
We have three 1998ers. One's coming offline.
If you have three, then you have one, so, yeah.
Yeah, the, the math isn't working, but we're, we'll take it.
Yeah, yeah. All right, cool.
Yeah.
He has MacGyver.
Yeah, we have a MacGyver.
Other questions for Russ? Okay, Russ, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion, tenly agree to pages forty-three.
Russ, thank you. I appreciate it. Also, the grants you get us over the years, I do appreciate that. That's a certain, a big help when we get to these budgets here. So, thank you for coming in. Thank you for keeping it as far away from the community as possible. I will add, for the carry-in and carry-out, anyone going to visit our trails is certainly welcome to bring a bag with them and bring out more than they brought in, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Russ.
I'd like to make a motion, tenly agree to pages forty-three to fifty-four.
Second.
A motion of second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
I think Nancy Parent is here.
She is.
She can introduce who's here with her.
So, I have Jeff Porter, our recreation supervisor, and Lori Mujicharo, our supportive services supervisor.
And we are in community and recreational services, the mustard color tab, pages fifty-five through sixty-five.
Can we choose our colors next year?
No.
No.
So...
Green would seem fitting, I would think.
I know. I forgot Friday. I shouldn't have worn this today.
That's a...
No, no. It's, it's the week. I was told yesterday.
St. Patrick's Day week. Go for the whole thing.
So, fifty-five through sixty-five is community and recreational services, and we have a two point four percent increase. Really, everything is very flat. The utilities are up in the buildings and the senior center and things of that nature. But, other than that, I think that we're just trying to keep things status quo. Don't have really anything else to report on, but Nancy and her staff are here to answer any kind of questions that you might have.
Okay. Questions for Nancy?
Nancy, obviously, coming out of the pandemic, has the uptick for more services coming through the door? Or is still, you're still dealing with sheltered people and going to them?
A little bit of both. We're definitely getting a lot more seniors in need of help, and, you know, Lori's been, at least, I'd say, two to three a week of people who are now starting to utilize services, realizing what they lost in that time period. Still, people struggling financially, and mental health is probably an all-time low. It really is.
Or all-time high?
Or all-time high. One or the other, yeah.
All right. And for the struggling seniors, are they missing out on benefits from town and state, or where's the, where's the gap?
It's more that people haven't been utilizing services because they were isolated. And now, after being isolated, hoarding's an issue, mental health's an issue, getting home care, Alzheimer, you know, just a variety of things. We have to go out to do assessments and things quite often. We're just talking about that, one person doing it, so we're talking about ways to support each other.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Nancy?
Thank you, Nancy, for coming down, and nice to meet you. The Westwood Golf, Westwood's Golf Course, I know that we had a restaurant vendor last year that, that said they were going to stick it out through the end of the year. Have we found a replacement, or we have?
Yep. Yep. And we will actually get to that part of the budget, but, yes, the two gentlemen that run Tommy's Place in Bristol have signed contracts with us already, and actually, in the midst of applying for the liquor license and everything.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Nancy?
How many pickleball questions do you answer a day?
Probably more at the senior center, they answer them, but quite a few.
That's what I get asked about.
One thing that I'd just love to mention, if you don't mind, two seconds, because it's one of the things that I'm most proud of, is we've entered into a partnership with New Horizons.
Oh, yeah, good.
And we have four pickleball courts there in their big room. They just weren't using it.
Cool.
And not only do we provide both senior and recreation programs there, we employ the staff at New Horizons to be our building supervisors. At night, you know, Jeff handles the recreation end of it there. They just help watch during the day, the senior center. They're actually signing people in and collecting funds for us and everything. And I can't tell you how many people are thrilled just to have a job, and it's a great partnership.
I honestly, you know, get asked more about pickleball courts in town than like budget, or the 1928, or anything.
It's all people care about. It's the...
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
When are those courts supposed to show up?
Where there's doing the water lines and things like that now out there, so we're, we're moving along. We're moving along.
And can we say, sign up prior to that to learn how to play before a new court show?
Yeah. Come to New Horizons on Monday and Wednesday nights.
Monday, Wednesday, New Horizons.
Jeff, when are we adding Tuesday or Thursday? And maybe, so in April, yeah.
Okay.
Then you'll be able to come and learn.
It's all head there now.
After, after.
Pickleball is very, and the other sport that people are very interested in, and we're still doing some research on it, is cricket.
But you need a lot more space for cricket than you do for pickleball.
Right.
Yeah, it's much easier to address the pickleball.
Yeah. I mean, I've got a wicket, the whole thing, it's...
Any other questions? No? Nancy, thank you very much.
I've got a few more sections.
I would just have to TA this one.
Great. Okay.
I started last time, he cut me off.
Go ahead.
I wanted to make sure he was also.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to tenly... Just kidding. Agree to pages fifty-five to sixty-five.
Second.
A motion of second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? A motion of second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
So what, should we do recreation? Seventy-two. The red tab in the back is recreation, seventy-two to seventy-nine. Seventy-two to seventy-nine. So this is our rec fund, which isn't supported by taxpayer dollars. It's supported by user fees. And if you look at the first page on the, that's, it shows the revenues and then the appropriations, and we aim to match. So our total revenues we expect to collect is eight hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-one, and our appropriations are eight hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars. And each one of these things is, it's our soccer leagues, our culture and creative, our social programs, our bus trips, and various things. So this is, like I said, it's funded by user fees, and that's what Jeff Porter runs for us.
We were down, what, twenty, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three because COVID? So we doubled in that.
Which account are you looking at?
For revenues, it was four, sixteen, three, five, twelve, two.
Yeah, because.
Maybe this is.
You're looking at a seven-month.
I'm sorry, six eighty.
Oh.
One over. My fault.
Yeah, it comes in just a strange order, yeah.
The, as Jeffrey always reminds me, their revenue comes in February and January when they open registrations for the next year. Their, their programs tend to look, they're, they're not really an arctical year. The programs aren't. Their programs really are not. Their programs run different from our fiscal year, so they're always trying to match them all.
Yeah.
But usually, like, the last summer's programs were actually paid for registration. The revenue for that came in February twenty twenty-two. So right now, collected revenue for twenty twenty-three for programs that were due in July, August, until twenty twenty-three, which is our next fiscal year.
Okay.
So, so until the end of the year, if you look at the projection column, the next column over, you can see that we're actually projecting overall the revenue could be almost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. One point two four nine versus one point eight twenty-seven thousand. And then last year, you can see the same thing happened for the actual, they collected almost one point one million and spent nine hundred thousand.
Got it. Thank you.
Maybe this is the place where we have the cricket, maybe for five dollars, you get a league going, because actually I got an email today, you probably all did too, for dropping basketball. If I could play basketball, I'd be happy to go on a court, but I don't think I'm tall enough. Brutal, for sure, but not tall enough. You know, all joking aside, this would be a great opportunity. I know that there are a lot of cricket players in town, and maybe, I don't know, like, you just really need like a long sort of pitch, really, and maybe that could be something to do at one of the, like, like IAR or something on one of the fields there.
Our field space is very limited, but we, I know that they, some of the cricket players, they, they come and do like pickup games.
Yeah.
Come up here at the high school and they play some different games. So we're, we're working on pickleball, and that's, that's, we're going to get, get through that, and then I think we're going to start concentrating on cricket to see where we are from there.
Okay. You know, those games take like three days to finish, right? It's a very fascinating sport, though, but yes, it's very long.
Brian?
I live next to IAR, and I have seen pickup games of cricket over there, which are pretty interesting. Is that not large enough? Or do you need a space larger than the IAR field?
It's large enough, but we have other things there at the same time as what's, what's happening.
A real cricket pitch is probably about five acres.
Mm-hmm.
So it's about the size of probably a three-foot size R and B, if not more.
Wow. I knew it was bigger, but.
So early Robin's is not quite large enough for a full cricket pitch, but it's probably large enough for a pickup game or two.
Okay.
And then there has to be some adjustments to where the.
Yeah, you have to have the center area.
Yeah, the mound and everything else, and where the ball ends.
Yep. We've had a group of people come talk to Jeffi and Ryan several times.
Yeah.
Future thoughts?
Yeah, absolutely.
But if anybody out there that has five acres of land that wants to donate it, the town was.
Joe?
We'll discuss.
Flat, flat, five acres.
Very nice.
Nothing on a ledge.
Nothing on a well end.
That would make for a very interesting game. Extreme pickleball, I mean, extreme.
Ed?
Thanks. Yeah, just wondering, have you noticed an increase in usage at the skate park since the new updates have, have gone in?
Yep, we absolutely have.
Oh, great.
And we actually have a crew that's really working on creating a regular-using family that, that uses it and tries to do activities and everything. They just ran out of nice, although we ended up having nice weather much longer than we thought, but they're going to start doing regular programs during the summer, the few kids, and even have some lessons and things. So we're excited. I think, I think they're going to do a nice job and very well used. We have people coming from different places to play, to skate.
Good to hear.
Have you tried it yet, Ed?
Not yet.
Oh, just one last. I apologize. The summer concert series?
Yep.
Still, are we moving it back up, moving it down?
We had so many compliments about the new site because of the fact that we get the shade from the trees and everything. So we are going to keep them all there except for our first, which is our cooperative concert with New Horizons. So we're going to use the, the parking lot area, just because it's easier for all the wheelchairs that they, they bring for that event.
And you remind the public where that is?
It is right on the grounds of Staples House, right where Staples House is right in front of the library.
Great.
But yeah, so many people loved that location.
Plus, it's free advertising when they're playing.
Absolutely.
As the cars slow down, they can turn right on.
Yeah, it's part of the concert.
Other questions?
And we need the TA on that.
I'd like to make a motion to TA pages seventy-two to seventy-nine.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
The next item is the Westwood's Fund. It's the blue tab in the back of the book, and I think it has pages. And again, on the front page of the, this is the Westwood's Fund. You can see the revenues, the different items at six sixty-four, and the appropriations there. If you remember, the full-time employees are paid out of the operating budget. So this is like a program. We were very excited to hear about the new restaurant owner and some different things. So we're hoping to have a better season with the restaurants, and again, I think it's going to be great when the, the facility has the pickleball and some different things. So we think that we can see a nice marriage between what's going on there. We're upgrading the parking lot, too. And so Nancy and I were talking about things for the splash park, maybe ice cream and some different things that could come out of the restaurant. And so the, those types of things that I think it will help the restaurant and help Westwood's Golf Course, too.
Will those hours marry each other as far as pickleball, golf, and the restaurant? Are they going to be working at the same time? Would the restaurant be off?
Well, no, the restaurant would be open because they're typically open all the daylight hours anyway, so it would actually match very nicely with the restaurant.
Perfect.
Questions?
Just a comment, yes, please, on the ice cream.
Yeah, I know.
Other questions?
I'd like to make a motion to TA pages eighty-two to eighty-three.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
So that's it for Nancy, right? All right, thank you.
Great, thank you for coming in. Nancy, Lori, Jeffrey, appreciate it. Appreciate all you do, particularly everything you did during COVID to keep everybody safe and healthy.
Okay, let's do that one. Yeah, yeah, we have, we missed one account, the fire marshal account. That is. Twenty-six.
One page, twenty-six.
So this is the fire marshal account. It's, it's not flat. It's up two point six percent, but the, oh, the one item I always like to talk about is the hydrant charges on it, just because it's one of the largest one-item, line items in the budget. It's, and you can see here that we pay a hydrant maintenance fee to the various water companies, and we are paying one million, one hundred and forty thousand dollars in that. So that, when that account goes up and by a percentage, it does, it's an expensive line item. The rest of the account is, I think, flat, and that's it for the fire marshal's account.
Questions on the fire marshal's account? We certainly can't cut back on fire hydrants, so, Joe?
I'd like to make a motion to TA page twenty-six.
Second.
A motion of second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Yeah, all right. So, and then, Joe, so if we do benefits now, and then our dinner is coming, should be here soon, so maybe we do benefits. We have dinner, and then we'll hit debt, revenue, and the other side of the budget.
Great.
All right, so it's the blue tab, pages sixty-six through sixty-seven, and I'm going to turn it over to Joe and he can run through the benefits account.
Overall, the benefits are up almost five percent, four point nine percent. The largest driver is social security and pensions. We see the largest increase at page sixty-six. Social security because the wage base has been increased by the, by the social security administration for next year. And pensions, do you recall last year you added funds to increase some rate return down to six point sixty-five percent? Based on evaluation, and for this current year, or as of July one, twenty twenty-two, that added additional one hundred and sixty thousand to this year's contribution. So that basically happened there. Also, last year, because everything's on a retrospective basis, the results at the end of June, January to twenty twenty-two pretty much break even for the pension funds. There wasn't any real gain in investments. Wasn't any gain towards the approved liability, so the pension number, the contribution number had increased next year. Everything else has slight increases to it. It's all based on renewals that we know about at this point. So if there's any questions, any of you happy to answer those? Actually, I should point out the open terms. We had a very good renewal this year. We actually, our initial renewal was, was an actual decrease of seventeen percent. Obviously, take the roll and run, but my conscience told me I better have Anthem check that, and Anthem check that, and they said, no, we were wrong. They were wrong, and we actually ended up with just over a two percent decrease overall, so.
Two percent's pretty impressive these days, and we can be sure they would have come back to us if you took the seventeen.
Things have happened.
Yeah, well, you know, because I wouldn't have pushed it, but we are self-insured, and there's, and those renewal numbers, we require, we rely on those. Obviously, we formed our self-insurance, so we need to have, make sure we have enough money to pay claims. And two, we use those same numbers to charge the employees their cost share. So, you know, I, well, I'd like to give them a break. That would have been a pretty substantial break, and we would have basically ended up short-funding our, our self-insurance fund this year. So we're not going to do that, obviously. So, but, you know, you have to give credit to the employees. We've been getting tremendous amount of employees switching over to, on a voluntary basis, there's no requirement. Kathy's been pushing, and we've had a campaign to go to the high deductible health plan. And we are pretty much at the point, again, on a voluntary basis, where the high deductible health plan is actually our, our major plan. More employees on plan that right now than our part of the traditional plan. A part of that's because of the traditional plan, they had a forty-two percent increase last year. But again, we've had people moving over to it, and I think this year, we're actually seeing people in bigger swing loads, so it's, we have employees acquiring them out right now. So we're, and we're having a good year, so far, we've had a good year this year because of that.
Great.
I think it's, it actually, it, some towns, in different ways, people have done it different ways to get the employees onto the high deductible. But I think that our philosophy worked pretty well, that, you know, the prices on the other side kind of drove people to go on to the high deductible. But doing it as a volunteer basis and giving some incentives and having, and not having a lot of union issues that had come along with forcing people to go along to the high deductible, I think, really worked out. And people have come over, like Joe has said, and it's saved us money, and it's saved the employees money. Now it's a much easier sell. But we really, we now really just try to tell the employees because they're, it's, it's really not that smart not to go on it because you're really, it's so much more expensive the other way.
Those are, it's, it's HSA, right? It's an HSA and.
It's a high deductible thing.
Yeah, it's the same, it mirrors what the schools offer, correct?
Is ours, they have, are the same?
No, ours is not the same. They're actually, they're actually a little stingier. We, we pay, they, they have a base, I think they're eighty-two.
Okay. Yeah, I, that was, my, my main question was going to be on that, and, and I understand the philosophy in not forcing people on and wanting to, a carrot as opposed to a whip, and I get all that. But it's, in general, that, that's a, if, if the entire town was on that type of a plan, it would be a net savings for us, right? I mean, and from a benefits perspective, yeah, I, anything we could do to, I, I think people hear the high deductible part, and in their head, those types of plans minus the HSA part were really bad deals for people if something really bad happened to them. With the HSA part, I think that they are a much better deal than people think. I'm sure you guys are doing a great job getting the message out, but whatever we could do to get as many people on to those plans, I think would be advantageous.
Yeah, and, and the thing, I would say that if, if the next, we'd have to, you know, negotiate all of that. That's what part of the problem is.
Yeah, sure.
But I think that that could be something now, again, we just settled, but in the next round, that, that would be the time where we actually get it into the contract language, because the unions wouldn't be so much against it because the majority of the people would be on it, and the people that aren't on it should have been on it anyway. So I think that would be the time where we could potentially get it into the contract where you'd have to go on.
Yeah, I was, having switched to a plan like that myself in the past like five or six years, I was dubious at first, too, but it's great. The, the plans are fine, they're, you know, our opening's covered and.
What we find is word of mouth is the best way.
Yeah.
And what happens is when you get one person, I'll give you a, a, a good example is, when we first went to the South, the only person in my office, and I didn't push my employees to go to the, one of my employees asked about it, explained it to her. She went on. She loved it. Next thing you know, she signed up. I think, I have, I think I have one person left in my office who's not on it.
Yeah.
And again, it was word of mouth.
And they probably still have a rotary phone, too.
Right, exactly. And I, like I said, I think I had one person not on it. So it's, it's really the employees themselves. And we're hearing that today. We'll start an open enrollment process at the end of April, we'll go through May, assign people up for, are playing for July one. So people will, we'll sign people for July one, and we're already getting phone calls, and we're already having requests for seminars, go out to the departments and talk to the employees about what the HSA, high deductible health plan's all about. So I, I think, you know, we're, we're really getting there. We, we have about a hundred and, a hundred and sixty-four full-time employees, benefited employees, and I think we'll, we're probably going to go up a hundred beating the HSA this year.
This is slightly off-topic, because I, I know, I'm sure that they, I know that the library operates independently of us, but we contribute to their budget. But I, same conversation we had in the library board meeting, where I think there's, don't quote me on, on specific numbers, but I think it's twenty-six library employees. I think there's like two of them that are on these plans, and the library's always looking for how to save money as well. So if there's any way to loop them in whenever you do those types of seminars, it'd be great, because I think they could.
Just very briefly on the topic is that we have worked with the, tried to work with the library in the past to try to, we've had some seminars, and Joe and his staff and Kat have worked with the library, and there has, there had in the past been some reluctance to move on.
That's what it seems like when, in a conversation, I think with the new administration and the library coming in, it might be a great time to try to really encourage that.
I hate to say reluctance is an understatement.
I, I, listen, I, I know exactly. I had the same conversation in one of those meetings last year, so I know where it's coming from, but maybe with a new administration.
New administration, yeah.
Very good. Any other questions?
One really quick question. So you said the largest driver is social security and then pensions? And then you mentioned something about the social security and why that was. Can you just repeat what you said?
Yeah, believe it or not, the, there's a cap on, on how much social, social security, how much of social security you're taxed on. So, so there's a wage limit. So once you hit a certain wage limit, you no longer pay social security.
Oh, I didn't know that.
While we don't have a lot of employees that ever hit that wage cap, that wage cap is now pretty much, we, we usually have ten employees, maybe fifteen employees who hit that. And, and now that wage cap is at a point now where maybe, maybe have one employee insured. So, and, but, but that's important to the employer's share of that. When the employee hits that wage cap, the employer doesn't have to pay for that employee involved. So you're saving six point two percent on that employee's earnings. So, so that, that's going to drop off, and if you're part of it, and so that, that process will, there. So that, that's really the cost now.
Thank you.
And for the pensions, obviously, last year you said we, we loaded some extra money in there. It benefited us. So by not doing anything this year, how are we looking for the next round?
The, the contribution has to go up, but it's probably the. The contribution's going up because, one, because of that lowering of the interest rate, and also because of some. You have a point of three hundred and fifty, on itself, on itself, it's going to three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars on, on our contribution this year. So it's, and, and again, it's a combination of that lower interest rate, maintaining that lower interest rate that you guys agreed. So it's, and, and again, it's a combination of that lower interest rate, maintaining that lower interest rate that you guys agreed to last year. And then two, also just based on performance of the, of the overall investments of the plan from last year. The liability in the plan hasn't, has grown slightly. The growth in the investments offset that liability. There's, there's always a gap, you know? I think we always talk about the idea that, there, there are a few of these, I'm not going to say you never. Most pension plans are not fully funded. They're, they're funded at a certain level. Their bond is to get eighty percent, eighty, eighty-five percent funded is really where you want to be on these plans. And what that means is that your liabilities are here and your, your funding is here. And so you have that gap and that's the, that's the percentage of your funding. So our gap unfortunately grew, one, because we lowered the interest rate assumption and two, because our investments didn't perform as well as we hoped they would last year. So because of those two factors, in order to close the gap over the next thirty years, our contribution had to look like three hundred forty thousand dollars next year. So that's where we're at. You know, this year, the stock market's, you know, been a roller coaster. So where we're going to be, you know, a year from now talking about this, it's, it's hard to say. Unfortunately, everything boils down to what happens and where you are at June third, it's, it's that snapshot of time. So as you recall during the pandemic, in January of, January of twenty twenty, we were, our, our claim here that our investments were well under twenty percent return. Pandemic hit, the stock market tanks and, you know, we had a negative at the end, at June thirtieth, it was, it was all negative. So, you know, June thirtieth is the key to everything. Like, every month when we could be monitoring reports, January, January, we had three million dollars in investment returns. It was great. February was two point four, two point nine million dollars lost. So we're bouncing back and forth. If you don't want to bounce back and forth, you want to gain.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Difficult market right now.
Other questions?
Yeah, one more quick question on the pension. So you, you talked about how we're reducing the assumed rate of return from the six point seven five percent to the six point six two five percent. I think originally that was a recommendation from the retirement board, is that correct?
Right, that was their.
Their request.
That was their recommendation last year. And actually, they wanted to do that and you may recall, I didn't do that. Like when we came to you a year ago at this time, we kept the six point seven five percent there. And I think you people, in doing your budget deliberations, actually added the additional funds in to get to the six point sixty-five percent. So it was their recommendation and you, you went along with it, so.
And the, the six point six two five percent, that was like their final recommendation? They didn't have like two years out, reduce it again or?
No, and I'll probably get in trouble if the pension board, unfortunately, hopefully not the chairperson, but we haven't had a meeting since, we haven't had a meeting in a while. So the, and we haven't reviewed the actuarial, the actuarial evaluation. But the board's ultimate goal is to get to six point five percent.
Six point five, okay.
That's their ultimate goal. The goal was to reduce it by five eights each, each, each year until they got to six point five and then to review it at that time. When the valuation came out this year, the actuary actually went in the, in the opposite direction. She's, she brought it back to six point seven five and in her draft report, I reminded her that it had to go back to six point six two five percent. So she revised it and reported based on six two five. And she remembered that we should probably go to six point five. And I said, no, let's stay at the six point six two five. So that's where she set up with her report. So I think we have a meeting in March.
Twenty-nine, yeah.
So, and she, the actuary will be there and I'm sure the pension board will give me an earful.
But we're still, maybe slowly, slower than some would like, moving towards that six point five. We're, you know what I mean?
Yes, we are. And, and as you recall, in September, we made some substantial readjustments to our asset allocation to go in that direction with the investments themselves. So we are going in that direction. And I think, you know, staying with the six point sixty-five is not a problem. I don't think we'd like to, it's not going to be a problem. Actually, I said the actuary thought we should stay at six point seven five.
Yeah, I mean, everybody in town is slowing down everything that we're doing this year. It's one of those things. Sorry for cutting in here, Tom.
Yeah, no problem.
Thanks, Joe, for the clarity.
Other questions?
I'd like to make a motion at TA pages sixty-six and sixty-seven.
Second.
Motion second. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion passed unanimously.
So Kat is right on her way back with the food. I guess the building committee meeting is going longer for the high school.
Johnny's not there to.
Because Devin is up there. So you, we really, I think this would be a good time to break and she should be back any minute. So why don't we just do that? And then CJ, the thoughts are, is that we'll, it looks like we will be able to, other than economic development, which Rose will be here tomorrow and the library, which will be here first thing tomorrow. I think when we come back, we can go through the revenues and finish up the budget, except for those two minor accounts. So I, I think that we'll have dinner and then run through those. And I think that would be a good spot to stop at. I mean, we could go further, but I mean, I think that would probably be a good spot.
Sounds logical.
At that point, okay.
Okay, so we're moving to adjourn at six o'clock. Your break, excuse me, we're moving for a break at six o'clock. It is now six thirty. We have finished our half hour break. We will return to session. Kathy, where would you like to go from here?
We actually did not do the records budget.
Okay.
Pages sixty-nine through seventy-one. The good news with this account is that there is no rate increase. And our garbage fee will be two sixty-eight per household.
Great.
And if you see on that page, you have the revenues equalling the appropriations. And Joe, is there anything in this account that would be of interest?
The first account, the first basis, that's the landfill, transportation basically that we have. There is large increase in contractual services, that's a cautionary warning, we're not investing. It seems to be closing cycles in years where there's too much brush, you have to pay substantially to remove the brush. But when there's years when there's not a lot of brush for shipping, then we can pay less. But we're in one of those cycles where we're paying more. On collection and disposal, one thing I would point out here is on our tip fees. We're actually seeing a decrease in our tip fees for next year. You may recall, we went to Mirror Close and we went to Murphy Road. We have a rate guarantee with them for five years. And next year, our rate stays the same as this year. So it's a hundred and ten dollars per ton. In addition, our bulkage tonnage rate is actually a substantial decrease. We went to ninety-nine dollars a ton from a hundred and eighteen dollars a ton. So we saw substantial savings there. And then the good news is we're actually seeing a reduction in tonnage. We're going back to pre-pandemic levels. We were actually going down. We did hike over six thousand back in early two thousand ten. And now we're going back, in the pandemic, we went back over six thousand, now we're going back down again. People are recycling, taking things out of the waste stream, so it's, it's good news for us. And then on the final page, we have our hazardous waste collections. We have the, the, the area that we have hazardous waste collection. And it's been very successful for us because we can save a lot of money with this program. And we have, like, we have one coming up.
Yeah, it's on, I think, right around the cleanup day time.
Which is about April twenty-one?
This year, this will be the one first year, it's not the same day, but.
So, so this is where, this is where we pay for our share of those hazardous waste collections.
Great.
And as Kathy mentioned, the rate will stay the same. What we've been doing is, if you look back on that first page, we have been using fund equity and fund balance to offset some of the costs over the past few years. One is because our fund equity is very large and we, we should bring it down somewhat. And so we are trying to keep the rate stable at the same time and bringing, using some of our fund equity. So that's pretty much everything.
Okay, questions for Joe?
Just a quick.
Puns, Brian?
No problem, just a.
No, I said puns.
Puns, any, no.
Go ahead.
Things are picking up, aren't they? No joke. You asked for it.
Yes.
So just my question is, how are, how's the search going for a future trash recycling solution for us?
State of Connecticut is, I get, I'm going to be a little sarcastic here. They finally decided to take an interest in, in this whole problem. So I guess there are some proposals for study committees to study the issue, to, to try to come up with some solutions. You know, I guess everybody has a different opinion as to what's the best way of getting rid of trash. And we're never going to have a hundred percent recycling, you know? Basically, you get very, even, as good as you think you are doing recycling, there's always contamination. And, and any little contamination in any little bit of recycling ruins, ruins the whole pile. So it's, it's so, it's interesting. We never got this from Mirror, but our, our new Murphy Road contractor, he actually sends us a report every month how much of our trash collected is actually contaminated. So it, and it's, it's very miniscule. It's not a lot. It's, it's very, very miniscule. But it's, it's interesting to note that as good as you think you're doing, there's, there's always some contamination. The state basically is, there's a bill right now up at the legislature, they're considering to study the issue. And again, their focus is to discourage people from throwing things out and recycling things. And, and they want a more robust recycling program. So, and, and that's probably part of the other problem with here is, you know, we are bearing our trash. Murphy Road brings it to Ohio or Indiana or someplace out. They, they transport it out there and it goes to a, a large landfill site where it is buried. And I guess that's a known of these days. So they're trying to get us to stop doing that. So I think over the next ten years, I wouldn't say five, over the next ten years, you'll see some substantial changes in, in trash collection. I would probably say that you may even see us not collecting, getting out of the trash business and the state taking it over.
Interesting.
So our contract with Murphy is for the next.
Five years.
Five years. And that's with the regionalization in the other towns that we're all part and parcel of it?
No, there's no regionalization. Actually, what happened was when Mirror decided, we were, when we were with Mirror, it was regionalization. Basically, we were all, we're part of Mirror. And Mirror basically fell apart last year. We were all left on our own, to our own devices. And some of the private contractors out there, Murphy Road, CPM, WCPM?
Yep.
They offered to handle people's tra, or towns' trash for them. So we went, Murphy Road, what they did is they approached a lot of towns and were very aggressive in, in their, their cost proposals to towns. So they actually, in essence, regionalized it by basically getting all these towns to sign up with them. So we're, we're, we're part of a large group of towns that did sign up with them in this region, but it wasn't a cooperative effort.
Okay.
Probably the nearest part of the cooperation was, I guess, Russ Arnold. And I mean, and this is, you know, basically we're just talking to somebody. Russ was talking to the public works director and Avon and who happened to at that point be meeting with the people from Murphy Road. And the public works director and, and Avon said to them, you should go see the guys in Farmington. And, and that's how we ended up with Murphy Road. So that's really what it came down to.
Okay, but our rate isn't going to change a series of standard at two sixty-eight?
No, it, the, the, yeah. The rate that we charge the residents will not change next year, stay at two sixty-eight. There is a typo in the book here, I think it says two seventy-two. It's actually two sixty-eight. Last year, just to clarify, last year when we first came to you, we proposed two seventy-two. Then we signed with Murphy Road and by the time you set the actual rate itself, we were able to go to two sixty-eight. So, so initially we did propose last year two seventy-two, but we actually ended up at two sixty-eight and we're going to stay there this year.
Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none.
I'd like to make a motion at TA pages sixty-nine through seventy-one.
Second.
Motion second. Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion passed unanimously.
I think the next item is debt, which is an orange tab on page sixty-eight. And I'll turn it over to Joe to talk about that.
This, this account does increase next year. It's one of the few accounts that does have a substantial increase, looking at a seven point one percent increase. This, this funds all of the town's debt. It includes the two leases that we have remaining for the energy conservation and the streetlight acquisition, both of them. Energy conservation has a ways to go. Streetlight acquisition, I think, actually ends a year, a year and a half from now. So you're seeing the end of that one. And it also includes the clean water fund. We have three loans for the upgrade of the treatment plant. So you see the payments there for the, for those three loans. Those are fixed at two percent. There's through the state of Connecticut. And, and the portion of those loans actually are paid for from, by the people who use, the large users, Avon, Burlington, Canton and Yukon all pay a portion of, of that debt service also. And there is a revenue line, what we'll talk about in a couple of minutes. And then it's the existing debt on the long-term bonded debt that we have. Included in here is the twenty twenty-two bond issue for the forty million dollars of which a portion of it went for the high school project. And the overwhelming majority of it went for the high school project. So that's in here, plus all our existing debt. We don't have anything substantial dropping off for next year. And two years out we do, but next year we're pretty much status quo. Also in here is an interest payment on another planned debt issuance. Planning to go to the market in June. I was hoping to go in, in July or August. I was trying to push out the next debt issue into July or August. But the good weather has caused the high school project to move along a lot quicker than we thought it would. So we're paying out a little bit more than we thought we would at this point. So we need to do an issue sooner than we thought we would have, or hoped to have, would have to. So we're doing an issue in June and I did include in here only the interest payment. What we're going to do is, we're going to defer the principal payment to after July first. Normally what would happen is if we issued in June, we would have to do the interest in, the two interest payments and one principal payment next year. But in talking with our financial advisor, we agreed that pushing it out, pushing out the principal payment for fifteen days would not be a problem for the market. So we're going to push out the, even though we're going to issue in June, we'll issue, we'll close, sorry, we'll close in June. We'll issue in May, close in June. The first principal payment will be due in July of the following year. So you're going to miss a year of, of principal payments. But you do, you will start to make two interest payments next year. And that's included in here. We're estimating that to be in the, around a little over six hundred thousand dollars in interest payments for that project. And that, where the, part of that increase comes from for next year. The thirty million will mostly be for the high school. There will be a couple of smaller projects that will be included in that. But it's predominantly twenty-eight million, I think, slightly less than twenty-eight million will be, will be for the high school.
Okay, questions for Joe on the debt? Okay, seeing none.
I'd like to make a motion at TA page number sixty-eight.
Second.
Motion second. Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion passed unanimously.
Revenues, Joe? And that's the, under summaries in the beginning of the book, the red tab, general fund revenue account. And it doesn't have page number on it. Joel, you?
Okay. I guess I'm just going over the non-tax revenues, right? Is that what it says?
Right.
Yeah, it's the non-tax revenue. So I actually start with the property tax, but not for, not the first item. On the, just briefly go over the categories. The category starts property taxes, starting delinquent taxes down to telecommunications tax. Those are the, they're all taxes, but they're either collection of delinquent taxes, interest and fees on, on delinquent taxes, the supplemental motor vehicle taxes and also the telecommunications tax. That actually, in prior years, was listed as a grant under state and federal grants. Our auditors have pointed out that that's not really a grant, we should put it up under property taxes. They do when they, when they do the audit. So I decided to go along with them and.
So I decided to go along with them and I pushed it up there. That whole category is, that whole category is up 8.14%, 8.14%, $114,000. And that's primarily the supplemental motor vehicle, a little bit in the, a little bit in the interest and lien fees, and a little, in the decrease in the delinquent taxes. And then also moving in the telecommunications tax revenue into that, also brings it up. Licenses and permits is up 23%, and that's all building fees. We've had a, we've been having a really good experience with building fees over the past four years. We thought it would slow down during the pandemic, and just the opposite happened. It went crazy. And we have not seen a reduction in it. Well, we have seen some reduction, but not to the extent that we thought we would see. So I feel pretty confident in the number, you know, as long as things keep going the way they're going. What's, the nice thing about it is, it's not relying just on residential building. It's all kinds of building that's taking place, all kinds of home improvements, commercial building. So we're seeing a wide variety of things taking place there. Fines and penalties is down slightly. That's just the, there's court fines and the dog charges. Interest earnings, this is a big increase, as you can see, 365% increase. Rates are up, and we're seeing the benefit of it this year. So we feel, you know, this year, we're going to collect close to $1 million in interest income. And next year, we feel that, we feel it's a little bit of a gamble, especially after reading today, or especially after Silicon Valley bank last week. The forecast was that rates would continue to climb, at least through the midsummer, end of the summer. We probably wouldn't see any rate decreases from the Fed until next January, December, January timeframe. So we felt confident that going, you know, increasing our interest revenue, that we would continue to get good returns on our investments. And now we're starting to hear some rumblings that they might see an actual rate decrease in June. I don't think that's going to happen unless more banks fail. But at the same time, that's, that's our one, if, I wouldn't want to say it's a gamble number, but that's one of those ones where we are pushing it a little bit. State and federal taxes, this is based on, I'm sorry, state and federal grants. This is based on the governor's estimates. So most of it's pretty flat. The one big area of increase is the equalized cost sharing. He is proposing changes to the equalized cost sharing grant. And because of that, we would, we are projecting we will receive more money next year. I would also point out that he's proposing that to consolidate a lot of these grants into one grant. So in future years, you may see this look a lot different. You may see one grant line instead of all these little grant lines. And I would warn you, not for next year, but in the future. When they start to do that, that's a troubling sign, because it's a lot easier to cut one grant than it is to cut 10 grants. So in the future, that may be, you know, an indication of things to come. Chargers for services is flat. It's actually a slight reduction, 10th of a percent. And this is where we are seeing some slowdown in the economy. Land sales, real, just, which translates into real estate conveyance tax, also into the town clerk fees, we're seeing a slowdown. We're seeing not a lot, the recordings are down, and the transactions are down. Also in that, this area, we're starting to see some fallout with the tower, our tower rentals. We sell, you know, we rent space on cell towers, or we get rental on some of the cell towers in town. And with the consolidation emerges that have taken place, and some of the new technology, we're starting to see some pushback from some of the cell tower companies, that they don't want to pay their rents anymore. They want to negotiate, they're going to leave. So we're starting to see some changes, significant changes in that area. And so, you know, and again, that's some, another one for the future. Police services is up because that's our contribution. We talked about this a couple of weeks ago. That's the West Farms Mall, police officers. And West Farms Mall pays us for a police officer over there, plus their benefits, plus a half of another officer. And that's, that's that, that number there. That's also Burlington pays us for dispatch services, and that's also in there. So overall, and that, that account is flat. Then on the next page, other revenue. I mentioned before, we have the clean water loans. And Burlington, Avon, Canton, and Yukon Health Center do pay us. We levy an assessment on them, and that's that first line called other assessments. Next year's pegged at 703,963. That will actually go down every year, because the loans are going down every year. And obviously, the loans have declining interest. So as the amount we pay in loans, repayments, the assessment will also go down. But you can see, they are paying 700,000 of the annual principal and interest on those loans. And then the Westwoods contribution, this is, as Kathy mentioned before, the town took, absorbed in the, what, the maintain, the maintenance aspect of the Westwoods Golf Course into the town budget. And what we did is, we charged the Westwoods Golf Course for that, for that maintenance. So this is their, their payment to the town for those maintenance services. And then the final one is the fund equity position appropriation. This is what Kathy proposed and mentioned last night. We're proposing taking $1.2 million out of fund equity to help balance this budget out.
Okay, questions for Joe? Affirm?
So about the fund equity, I've been meaning to ask, the $1.2 million, we have 26 million in the...
We have 19, over 19 million in there.
19, okay.
Equates to about 16.4% of our operating revenues.
Okay. And the $1.2 million, quick math?
It'll equate to about, it'll bring it down to about 15.4%.
Okay.
On the, on the proposed budget.
Okay.
Or on Kathy's recommended budget. So in other words, if you took the 122, 9,025, should have just got rid of that. I don't know why we didn't do that. Should have just made it a flat 122. It, our fund balance will equals 15.4% of that.
Okay, thank you.
What's the recommended range?
Recommended range is, depending upon who you, you talk to, it's between 12 to 20%. The, we, we, I didn't want to say we settled, we, we set a target for keep it at 15%. I was, ideally, you'd love to get to 20%, but we thought to keep it at 15% as a good compromise. So I felt, we've always gotten comments that our, our fund balance is, is low compared to other AAA's. So we wanted to get it up into a 15% range, where a lot of other AAA's in Connecticut are. We can never match the AAA's in other, other parts of the country. A lot of those, a lot of them are outrageous, 30, 30%, 35%. We're not going to match that. But we felt that if we can get it up, you know, up above 15, we should, we should be fine with that. So that, that's, our intention was to keep it there, or, you know, keep it at 15% for next year.
Thank you.
Other questions for Joe? Seeing none. Thank you, Joe.
How do you want me to word this one? Since this is no, the page without a number?
Revenues.
Revenues.
Just call it revenues.
Non-tax revenue.
Non-tax revenue.
Gotcha. I'd like to make a motion at TA, the page of non-tax revenue.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any further comments? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
So, other than economic development and the library, you've basically gone through the town side. What our plan would be for tomorrow would be, I think, to have a discussion about the revaluation, showing some of the numbers, going through the tax rate, having discussion about that, and putting that up on the board. And Joe has worked on some different things. I think it's important to at least have for the public to show some of the impact on the car, with the cars. And so we have some examples of that to show how the overall tax rate is. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, Joe, when we're looking at the, the impact on the cars, like we use that average household, do we have an average car tax?
Actually, we don't. And, and what I would prefer to show you is some actual examples. We have 50. I had, we, we pulled 50 assessments, 50 actual properties in town. And it, you're all on it.
We were told.
But you're not going to tell us whose car is whose, right?
It's all public knowledge.
We know you have the tassels you said.
Joe, let it fly.
No, no, you better, oh.
So the comment was simple. When they got to me, they're like, oh, no, you're, you're done. You have one old car, and your house went way up.
Yeah, that's what we figured out. Some of these people, you know, you gotta buy new cars.
Yeah, Johnny.
The council doesn't pay enough.
Johnny, spend 70 grand to save 1 grand. Come on.
So at any rate, so I'll show you some examples. Like I said, we have 50 examples. These are actual examples of the impact in town, and, and how it looks, how it looks without their cars, how it looks with the cars. And, you know, and, and again, it's all based on Kathy's budget, recommended budget, and recommended mill rate of the, that's included, the 24.38 mills that's in her budget.
Okay.
Let me take a look at that, and...
We'd have the tax and budget worksheet. We'd put that up on the board and show some different numbers for you. You know, we can just program them in. Again, whatever you guys want to do with that. And then, depending on where you go, how we usually work it is that you take each side of the, you figure out where you are comfortable with the tax rate, and then you'll make motions on the expenditures area that set the budget. And then, just so you all remember the process, is that you would be doing that, and then in April, and it's actually early in April, that becomes your town council proposed budget. You'd have a public hearing on that, and that would be the proposed budget. You still have opportunities at that time to make changes after the public hearing. Typically, you have not done, the council has not done that, but there is an opportunity to do that. And at that point, basically, you would be sending the town council budget, any of the items that you want to have for bonding. Right now, what I've proposed is the roads and the 1928 building. That would go, and then you have the warning, you'd set everything, and the resolutions would be for that April meeting. And from that period until the time that you have the referendum, we're in the blackout period. And that would be, you'd have the annual town meeting, and then you'd have the referendum.
Any questions, anyone on the process and for tomorrow? So tomorrow, we get the budget up on the big screen, and we'll look at the numbers, see where we're set right now, discuss some potential changes. The Board of Education, of course, being one of them, and see where that leaves us, and go from there.
Right, exactly.
Okay. And all this after, first, we're going to hear from the library and economic development, and then we'll start having those. Very good.
So one last question. Kathy from the Board of Ed had mentioned that they still have to have the Board of Ed approve it. When does that, you know, their, their reduction to two, because they're, right now, their budget's at 2.99. When will that happen, and will we have that all in the time of this, or?
No, usually, what happens is that the council sets the financial number for the Board of Education. The board can do whatever they choose to. Those are Kathy's recommendations. It's never done on time. So whatever number you pick, that's going to be the number, and the board's going to either take Kathy's recommendations or the group's recommendations, and that's what it will be.
Okay.
So to clarify, I mean, she gave us a number today that's 2%. And as Kathy was saying, she said, these are the things she thought she would change. If we approved a budget with a 2% increase from the Board of Education, the board itself could decide to do something different, but that is the budget that it is. So they have to work within the parameters of this is their budget. So, but she was just showing us how she could make this work. They could decide to make it work in a totally different way. But they have to make it work. And just to be clear, because I know Johnny said something in jest, we're not paid anything. We don't have a salary. This is a volunteer group up here.
We don't get paid.
It's easy to, it's easy to double and triple zero.
Yes, it is. Yes.
Waiting for my balloon payment.
Nothing from nothing is nothing. So, okay, anything else?
No, that is it for this evening.
Well, okay, I'll leave you with a quote before we go. This is from Alan Greenspan. Unless you're willing to compromise, society cannot work together.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the March 15, 2023 town council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I see no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 6:58, we are adjourned.